All right, folks, just getting my computer up to speed here. Okay, good evening. Welcome to our planning board meeting. I'd like to start it with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ernie Santoro had surgery last week on his back. He's recovering. We wish him the best. I understand he's been through a little bit of an ordeal with that, so I just wanted to bring that forward. Before we get to announcements and things, emergency exits left and right for you folks. There should be an emergency. The restrooms are back out through the double doors and on the left. Please be sure to sign the attendance sheet. It's on the back table there. If you haven't already, please do that. And there are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you, with the email address and phone numbers for the Planning Department. Also, on the back table, are copies of the resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. Those are drafts. We may make changes during the meeting if necessary. Please turn off your cell phones, silence them, so that we don't have interruptions. If you have conversations, you need to take forward during the meeting, please go out the doors, close them behind you, so that we can keep the meeting orderly and that everyone can understand what's going on. We'll start with the meeting minutes of August 9th. Has everyone had a chance to review them? Okay, Joe, any comments?
No comments.
No comments, Scott?
No.
Al, Scott, okay. I'll take resolution to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll move.
Joe moves?
I'll second.
Got seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, approved. We have received several items of correspondence. Bill Kaiser, regarding the 1086 Strong Roads subdivision. We have prints of some slides that he's created in our packets. David Rico, also 1086 Strong Roads subdivision. And Amy Bartel, regarding the McGuire parking expansion.
We did have a late one of Dolores Fanton for 1086 subdivision to make it onto the agenda. It was late.
All right, you passed that out, or is it...? Okay. Thanks, Lisa. Boards, committee updates, town board representative this evening, no. Babette, I understand you have some words you'd like to make?
Yes, I have another commitment, so I'm not going to stay for the 1086 Strong Roads subdivision when it comes up. I was here last year, told you about how historic the original home is on the property. I'm not going to go over that whole thing again. James Hard, Civil War oldest veteran, born there, blah. So, since the house hasn't been occupied for several years, my concern is the deterioration of the house, and I would just encourage the board to encourage the owner to separate this parcel and hopefully sell it, so that somebody can buy it and keep the house in its, in some good shape.
Okay. Thank you, Babette. Kim?
Your next meeting will be October 12th, starting with a public hearing for Vavoline at 73, or 7503 County Road 42. Applicant is requesting approval to demolish the existing building, which is the Denny's Building, and build a 2,080 square foot Vavoline Instant Oil Change. Second public hearing will be the Landehan Minor Subdivision at 1130 Cork Road. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide the existing 15.788 acre parcel into two lots. Lot one will contain the existing house on 4.38 acres, and lot two will contain the remaining vacant land of 11.4 acres, and any carryovers from tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Kim from the board? Nope, okay. Conservation, I don't think anyone's here. Okay. So, first item on the agenda is for the Zimmer In Ground Pool application.
Yes.
Name, address?
I'm Guy Tano Abate. I am Sun Splash Pools co-owner. Our client is Sarah Zimmer, and we're proposed to put in a 16 by 42 fiberglass pool. It's a one-piece unit. Excavation, all spoils will remain on site. We're building a small retaining wall because of the drop-off, and we're certainly aware that it's a limited development district, and so we are here for that approval.
Okay. Wes, did you have some comments about the site plan?
I guess one of the things I might ask about is regarding the retaining wall. Do you know approximately how high that retaining wall is going to be, top of wall to bottom of wall?
Top of wall, the bottom wall will probably be eight foot.
Okay.
With, including a footer.
Okay.
So, there's a pretty good drop-off right now. We're just trying to extend the backyard enough with those existing spoils to be able to place the pool in the backyard.
Okay. Do you have a design for the wall?
No, not yet.
Okay. One of the suggestions or recommendations I might make to the planning board is to have a design of that wall done by a licensed professional engineer, and provide that either to the planning board for, to allow them to approve the site plan, or alternatively, if they so choose to approve the site plan, provide that drawing to the Building Department, so that they can review that and be okay with that prior to issuing a building permit.
Yes.
Could I just comment on that?
Just state your name and...
My name is Sarah Zimmer. I'm the homeowner. We're working with a ground expert, and he's using the huge boulders that weigh like 600 to 800 pounds.
So, the dolomite block?
Yeah, to go, there's an existing retaining wall there already that is much smaller rocks, and he felt like it may not be stable enough, so he's using the huge concrete blocks. It will be in the exact same place the current retaining wall is. Currently, it's two levels. It's tiered. There's one tier and a second tier, so all we're doing is building that second tier up. It will be in the exact same position as the original retaining wall.
Okay. Are there any details that you can provide to the town with regard to the size of the blocks, documentation, anything like that?
Certainly, yeah.
Would that go with the permit application to the Building Department, that they would request normally engineering drawings or...
Yeah, we can do an addendum to the permit with those specifications, certainly.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess I would make that a provision of the approval if we go forward with it.
I like that idea, Joe.
Okay. Because we're not in a position to evaluate retaining walls as a board, where they go, how much impact they have on the land, that's one thing, but, and perhaps a grading plan would be helpful. You and I chatted a little bit earlier about the lack, I guess, of detail of the site plan that you've provided. We can't really assess what the ground is doing, what the slopes are, if there's, what the true impact to the parcel is, so...
By chance, as part of, you know, as a contractor or the designer, do you have a grading plan? I mean, is there anything assembled like that?
No, but we certainly can get one.
Okay.
If you want to make that a requirement for permit.
Condition of the permit, for sure.
Yeah, if we can get approval now, and I can certainly provide that prior to permit, that would be ideal.
I'm comfortable with that, if the planning board is comfortable with that, making any approval conditioned upon providing those items to the Building Department.
I'd throw in erosion control, too.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whether it's siltation fence or...
Yeah, certainly.
Libra, we really need to, the Building Department surely needs to see all of those details and that information, or to assess the, you know, the stability of your project.
Absolutely.
So, it is a public hearing. I'd like to open it up to your neighbors, if there's anyone that has comments. Is there anyone that would like to come before the board, ask any questions about the application? Okay, I guess I'll go to the board, Joe.
I like the idea of getting the plans for the, you know, the grading and the erosion.
Okay, Scott?
I think, as well, I think the site plan is kind of weak as it sets before us, even with the photographs that they provided, but I think if we can kick that a little further down the line and have the Building Department, you know, check that and make sure it's okay. I also agree, when it comes to retaining walls, that you want exactly that type of certification associated with it, because there's so much liability that goes along when you're doing that, and there's so much opportunity for it not to be done right. So, I think it's a good requirement to have that in there, too.
So, just out of curiosity, is this wall supporting soil uphill from the pool, or is it supporting the soil that is around the pool?
So, the way it exists right now, and Sarah, you can interject here, there's a two-tier retaining wall. The pool is up on a plateau. We're going to extend that second tier and fill the spoils from the pool behind that wall to give us enough room to have concrete and, you know, a little bit of an area around the pool. So, it's really not disturbing the existing retaining wall that's been there for many years. We're extending the top of that retaining wall.
And the pool only, itself will only extend to that first retaining wall. It's just being built up so we can walk around it, basically.
Surely you'll agree, the last thing you want to see is 30,000 gallons of water go down the slope with a failed retaining wall. So, I think you understand that, the importance of getting this information in front of the Building Department.
Certainly.
They're comfortable with it. Now, I don't know, Wes, do you need to look at that before it goes to the Building Department?
So, my recommendation would be that to have the Building Department look at it, and if they feel necessary to refer it to the town engineer, we'd be happy to review that for them. Yeah.
Al?
No further comments, other than what's already been said, and just to include on the revised site plan, the dimensions of the pool and the fence to the property lines to make sure that it's compliant.
I think we noted that on the, on the survey.
Okay.
But certainly, we can clarify that and...
Yeah, a section through what you're doing is always good, especially if you're detailing out a heavy stone retaining wall and the other features of that part of the project, so... Is there something we can put in the draft resolution for that? First of all, I should entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move that.
Scott?
Al second.
Al seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Have a draft resolution, and Wes, you may want to chime in as to where this should go, but I'm thinking it's a, it's going to be an ongoing, I would think, if it's going to go to the Building Department. He's busily typing. All right, I will go ahead and read this, if you guys are okay with that. All right, whereas the planning board made the following findings in fact, and there are six of them. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on September 27th, 2022, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Zimmer In Ground Pool will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared, and be it further resolved that the application of Sun Splash Site Plan entitled Zimmer In Ground Pool located in the limited development district received by the Planning Board September 1st, 2022, Planning Board application, as 25 S P 2022, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature. Number one is standard. Number two, comments from code enforcement officer dated September 15th, 2022, be addressed. Wes, you want to put this as an ongoing condition regarding requirement for...
I guess I would put it as a condition prior to signature on the site plan.
Okay.
Right, for, for the applicant to provide a grading plan, number one, a erosion and sediment control plan, maybe that could be part of the grading plan. And number three, retaining wall detail designed by a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York.
Okay.
Did we want to add tie distances on the drawing, too, or some sort of, let me say something about tie dimensions?
Yeah, we did, Al did mention, including dimensions of the pool and distances to lot lines on the, on the site plan, so we can require that as well.
I think we drew that on the site plan. Pretty much far away from any, any lot line there at all, but I don't know what the setback here is in Victor.
At least to put it on one drawing where we could see it.
Yeah, if you can get...
Certainly can do that.
Details, and you can refer to the details or sections that you're going to be providing as well, but it's certainly helpful for the Building Department and the engineer to evaluate what's being presented and built.
And any questions thereafter?
Yep. Got that, Lisa?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So, that is condition number three, to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan. Ongoing conditions that the site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards. And number two, that the building permit be obtained for the pool prior to installation, and be it further resolved that Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do I hear a motion for approval as amended? Al, Al moves. Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero.
Conditionally approved?
Conditions.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Item number two on tonight's agenda, Crown Castle T-Mobile, 795 Old Dutch Road, Global Signal Acquisitions LLC. AFCON is requesting approval to replace and upgrade antennas and equipment on an existing wireless facility. Someone here to represent the applicant? Okay. I guess what we should do then is table that application, move it to the next meeting.
Yep, agree.
Okay, moving right along.
Well, it's easy.
Number three, Braun Minor Subdivision. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide 81.3 acres into two lots. Lot one will contain 5.02 acres, and lot two will contain, their balance are 76.28 acres, and I believe 7994 Parish Road. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rocco Venetia. I'm here on behalf of the Braun family and their attempt to subdivide the property. I'd like to point out that I helped you get a quorum tonight. I called Mr. Harder, my good friend, and asked him if I needed to put the project on a board, and he goes, "Well, there's not a meeting." I said, "Well, I better check your email."
And I believe, Joe, you have to...
So, I blew him in. He wouldn't have made it tonight for me.
Okay, so, yes, Joe does...
Sorry, Scott.
Yeah, he actually called me.
Oh, well, no worries. It got done. Better to call Lisa, but no problem.
Sure, little. This is fairly straightforward. There's, there's two houses that the family owns, one on the south side, which is on its own parcel, which is not part of the application, but it's on the map. And there's one on the north side, and that's our target parcel. We're trying to sell that five acres, or we have a contract on that. And then, we're going to keep the rest of the property as one piece. Even though it's divided by the road, we're still going to retain it as one tax map parcel number. I have a little house cleaning to do. I got a letter from the town engineer today about some setback question and a minimum lot size, so I've got to go back to the zoning book and just revise the map, and there might be another few comments from the town. But they're all minor, and I would ask that we could get approval tonight, based on the fact that I'm going to revise that drawing to reflect those changes.
So, just for the public's information, the parcel you're talking about is this one right here, out of the entire piece?
Exactly, Joseph. That's the target parcel, yeah.
And, and this lot actually crosses the road. It's a common...
It's got that funny shaped piece on the south side, yeah.
Okay. As a public hearing, I'll open up the floor and see if anyone, parcels' neighbors have any comments or questions. Feel free to come up, state your name and address, if you will. Don't be shy.
Hey, Rocco. We got to meet you.
Yeah.
I'm Mike Harrington. Actually, I'm the trustee, and I'm the son, one of the sons, of Tom and Nancy Braun for the subdivision. My brother Jeff and I came into town from out of town today to basically close on the parents' house that's on the south side of the property. Since mom can no longer stay there, we have basically things all set for having the farmhouse, a five-acre parcel, just being, actually just taken out of that huge parcel to be sold to someone who's actually friend of the family who's been in the house for five years leasing to buy. He's ready to buy it. And we have an offer in for the rest of the land, but basically is just waiting now for that parcel for the farmhouse, just to be sold. So, everything else that was talked about is just what we're waiting for, to get that set. That's, and that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I'll open it up to the board and to Wes. Al?
Seems pretty straightforward, no questions.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. I think he's going to take care of the minor comments, so I don't see a problem with it.
I have to stay out of it.
That's right. Good job. Wes, anything from your perspective?
Very, very minor comments that can be addressed as part of the condition of the resolution. There's just two notes on the plan that I wanted the, the design professional to confirm, so, very simple, straightforward.
Those were the two notes I alluded to.
Yep.
Okay. So, other than that, the resolution we can move forward with, from your perspective and the rest of the board?
Close the public hearing.
Having said that, I hear a motion from Scott to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Al?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. So, public hearing's closed, and if you guys are okay, I can read the draft resolution.
Sure.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. Whereas the planning board made the following findings in fact, and this is for the Braun Minor Subdivision, application 03 MS 2022. There are eight findings. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on September 27th, 2022, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Braun Minor Subdivision will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. Be it further resolved that the application of Venetia Associates Minor Subdivision entitled Braun Minor Subdivision, drawn by Venetia, dated August 3rd, 2022, received by the Planning Board August 15th, 2022, Planning Board application 03 MS 2022, be approved, excuse me, with the following conditions. Conditions that must be met prior to chairman's signing the minor subdivision plan. Number one is standard. Number two, that before the Planning Board Chairman signs the approved film originals that developers should submit to, two copies of electronic files to the town. Copies shall be forwarded to the town engineer's office to confirm that the data on the electronic files are the same as the approved subdivision plans. That section four standard approval conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor, in the design and construction standards be met. Number four, comments in a letter dated September 27th, 2022, from LaBella Associates be addressed. Number five, that the comments in a letter dated September 14th, 2022, from code, from the code officer be addressed. Conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to. One, that minor subdivision comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for land development, including section four. Number two, approved subdivision maps, including conservation easements, lot considerations, consolidations, sorry, and lot line adjustments shall be submitted in digital format. Number three, the applicant shall be aware that this approval does not mean that lot two is an approved building lot. Site plan approval will be required by the Planning Board prior to the lot becoming a buildable lot and prior, and before issuance of a building permit. Number four, property owners for lot two will need to perform deep hole and percolation tests witnessed by the town engineer, and submitted as part of the site plan application for review by the Town Planning Board. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do I hear a motion on that resolution?
I'll move it.
Scott moves?
I will second.
Naturally, Al with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, three, zero.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. One question. The medium that we bring the drawing in on, we really don't use CD-ROMs anymore. Would a flash drive be okay?
Oh, yeah. I'm sure it would be.
We can't email it, right? Could I email it to the town engineer?
I'm okay with email, but I would suggest that you email it to Lisa Bouton.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be fine.
It'd be a lot easier just to email it, then.
I'm okay with that.
Thanks, folks.
Any way we can get the electronic file is fine, as long as Lisa's happy. Okay, preliminary application, this is number four, Southgate Hills, Phase Three. Public hearing on this application is closed. Applicant is requesting approval for a clustered subdivision of 10 single-family lots on 11-acre parcel. Excuse me, this is the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. Sketch plan was acknowledged complete on August 10th, 2021. Good evening, Link.
Hi, Joe. Links, we drive BME Associates.
Hang on a second. Kim, would you mind closing the doors out back, please? Thanks.
With me is Jerry Watkins from BRW of Grease LLC. We're back. We were here two weeks ago. We had a couple of homework assignment pieces. One was the, Wes was going to have LaBella look into the access location based on the proximity to the section two access, based on Scott's comments. And then, the other was, we went back to the town board last night about the open space part of it. So, basically, last night, that's this plan here I marked up. So, basically, last night, the town board has agreed that, basically, we changed these lots, made them quite a bit bigger, and the town is, just wants to take, this is about an acre piece on the corner by the trail for the, so we sort of struck a line 50-foot on the other side of this parking lot, so that we could, the town will take the parking lot, the trail connection to Lehigh Trail, and then, this lot line basically got extended to the corner, so this lot got quite a bit bigger, and then, this lot is quite a bit bigger, with the pond and everything on it. And the only portion that would be dedicated to the town would be that one acre piece for the parking area.
So, this is, you're confirming it's consistent with our last conversation that you went to before the board?
Yeah, so basically, we went back to confirm with them, sort of, we listened to their input, and then we went back, and they confirmed that this is what we want, so this is what we'll be showing on the final subdivision when we come back.
Okay. I'm going to turn to Wes here and make sure that we covered everything he needs, or if he's...
He's gone.
Turned around? Hi, Wes.
Here.
Didn't think I was going to jump to you that fast.
So, the question that probably is of most interest to the planning board is the follow-up with regard to the intersection alignment, traffic, and my discussion with Lorenzo and his team. And I did, I did speak with them about the code requirements, Chapter 55, and the access management plan. And, and as you know, there's one subdivision, Southgate Two, that had been approved some months back, and the construction of the road is occurring here in this location. There's also, is this Southgate One here?
No.
Okay. We got Southgate Hills, Phase One Drive, that's existing here, and then, this proposed roadway, which is in somewhat close proximity to this, this intersection here. We talked about whether, you know, lining up this road with this phase-two road made any sense, or if there are any safety concerns with regard to having the phase-three road intersect here as opposed to over here. And we also talked about whether it would be a better configuration to have the end of this phase-three road come up to where this, this phase-one road is, and have the road come in here and just kind of flip-flop the north and south ends of that cul-de-sac road. In the end, the, the answer, or what we've concluded, is that this is, there's very low traffic volume resulting from the traffic that's coming off of this road, this proposed... volume resulting from the traffic that's coming off of this road, this proposed subdivision road, right? Because we've got 10 proposed lots, residential lots, and there are 15 residential lots here. So both are very low traffic volumes. While maybe it might be, maybe there might be some benefit here to lining up the intersections. This is a very unique parcel. It's kind of a wedge, really kind of limits the ability to be able to pull the road intersection over to this location, and it's very difficult to have a 90-degree intersection here, intersection approach, given the wedge shape of this parcel. So in the end, they felt that this, you know, is probably a reasonable way to go, Lorenzo and his team. And obviously, the reason why, one of the reasons the applicant isn't moving forward with lining up with this Phase 1 intersection is there's a lot of grading here, and there's a, there would be a lot of grading involved, and there's also a wetland here in this proximity. So that's why they're kind of avoiding putting an intersection at this location. In addition, this particular configuration and layout allows for more conservation easement area up against the Auburn Trail, which is a resource for recreation, obviously. So it kind of provides that benefit and then also avoids having to disturb the wetland, an existing wetland, and some significant grade changes that would be required, earth movement here. Hopefully, that's helpful. If you've got questions, I can try to answer them.
Anyone have questions, Joe or Wes?
I appreciate the research, and I'm glad you did that. I noticed the comment also came from Ontario County Planning when the project was first submitted, so I think having that justification is the right way to proceed when we have these situations.
I think it was a great question to ask, and I'm glad that we took the time to review it.
I'm satisfied with the additional due diligence we did there.
Okay. There was one question, I think it might have been from you, Scott, about the length of the radius or the tangent section to get into the curve. Wasn't long enough to meet the?
No, I don't think I came up with that one.
I think I might have said we were worried about if we moved it further this way than the line.
So this satisfies the Town Code, whereas pushing it any further to the, call it south?
Yeah, I don't think we had enough, we wouldn't have enough room to meet that tangent. That was one, what Wes was saying.
It interfuses a lot.
Right.
No, no problem.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it would still be hard to get the 60-foot right away and the radiuses and the 100-foot tangent in there.
Funky.
Yeah.
Okay, so we also left off at the last meeting, we did not adopt, or we didn't take action on the resolution, the seeker resolution that was in front of you. I'm not sure if, I've got that here in front of me now, but that's, you know, if you wanted to move forward with that seeker resolution, you know, I think that's kind of the next step in the process. And then we've also got a very preliminary draft of a conditional approval resolution for the preliminary subdivision that we could review if you're willing to entertain that tonight. I know you haven't had an opportunity to review it beforehand. Alternatively, if you were more comfortable, you could entertain that resolution at the next meeting in two weeks where you have an opportunity to review the preliminary approval.
What's the board's pleasure, I guess?
Do seeker.
We should be able to do seeker tonight.
Yep. Okay. And regarding the balance of it, I think if you're amenable to that, Link, I think we can do that in two weeks, the second resolution, so we get a chance to review the material we have. All right, so.
Can we, can I move forward with getting on, going with final in the meantime?
Are we?
Well.
I know there's some, like you want preliminary plan signed or something, but can I?
Yeah, we need to get the preliminary plan signed probably before you submit your final. I mean, that doesn't prevent you from working on your final application submission, right? The other thing we could do is we could review the preliminary resolution tonight, and then maybe if you're willing to take action on it, if you're comfortable with that, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay. And if we're not, then?
Yeah, I just want to try to keep rolling into final. I got to come back for final, you know?
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, that's a reasonable idea. So, all right, I will read the seeker resolution, then we can review the next one. So seeker resolution, Southgate Hills, Phase 3 Preliminary Subdivision. Get my reading voice tonight. Whereas on or about June 21st, 2022, glasses would help. Secretary of the Town Victor Planning Board received the preliminary subdivision application entitled Southgate Hills Phase 3 Subdivision. The project proposed on the east side of East Victor Road, tax map 28.04-1-4800. And whereas it is the intent of BRW of Grease LLC, the applicant to develop 10 single-family residences using the Town of Victor's clustered subdivision provisions found in Article 5 of Chapter 184 of the Town Victor Town Code, where the residences would be clustered on approximately 11 acres. And whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board classified the project as Type 1 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act pursuant to Seekers implementing regulations and initiated the lead agency coordination process by transmitting Part 1 of the Seeker Environmental Assessment Form and project information to involved and interested agencies. And whereas, none of the involved agencies have objected to the Town of Victor Planning Board being lead agency, and 30 days have passed since Part 1 of the EAF was transmitted to involved and interested agencies. And whereas, the Town of Victor Planning Board has carefully reviewed the project, Part 1 of the Long Environmental Assessment Form, application materials, public comments, and environmental record concerning the project, as well as completed the applicable Parts 2 and 3 of the Long Environmental Assessment Form, and has not identified significant adverse impacts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Victor Planning Board assumes and confirms its status as lead agency, and be it further resolved that no potential significant adverse environmental impacts were identified with the proposed project using the criteria for determining significance identified in 6 NYCRR 617.7C1 and in accordance with 6 NYCRR 617.7C2 and 3. And the Town of Victor Planning Board hereby finds and concludes that the proposed project will not present a potential significant adverse environmental impact, and hereby issues a negative declaration. And be it further resolved, a notice of negative declaration shall be filed and/or published to the extent required by the seeker regulations. This resolution has been prepared in accordance with Article 8 of the New York Environmental Conservation Act. On that resolution, do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Joe moves?
Second.
Got seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, four, zero. So Wes, would you like to review the?
Yeah, I'd be happy to read, happy to read this draft resolution. Maybe I could ask Susie, would you mind sharing my screen? That way, the board and the public might have an opportunity to be able to read along or at least visually see what I'm reading. Okay. Whereas the Planning Board made the following findings. A preliminary subdivision application was received on or about June 21st, 2022, by the Secretary of the Planning Board from BRW of Grease LLC, the applicant, for a major subdivision entitled Southgate Hills 3 Subdivision. It is the intent of the applicant to develop 10 lots on 11 acres under the clustering provisions of Chapter 184, Article 5 of the Victor Town Code. The application includes associated utilities, roadway, stormwater management facility, sidewalks on the site, as well as along East Victor Road. I think that was left over from, I don't think Phase 3, we're not doing sidewalks on East Victor Road, right?
No.
As more fully described and depicted on the preliminary subdivision plans, the application also includes placement of approximately 3.99 acres of, into a conservation easement that contributes toward the 50% open space requirement for major subdivisions. Additionally, the remainder of the 50% open space requirement is being accomplished through a 40-foot wide area at the rear of lots 47 through 53. Following a petition by the applicant, the Town Board modified the residential overlay zoning map on July 26, 2021, to reclassify the residential overlay zoning district for the project area to Residential B, allowing 0.5 units per acre where the property was previously classified in the Residential A overlay district. An under-review sign was posted on the project parcel as required by Town Code. A public hearing was duly called for and was published in the Messenger Post, and whereby all property owners within a minimum of 500 feet of the project site were notified by U.S. Mail. The Planning Board opened a public hearing on July 26th, 2022, and such public hearing was closed on September 13th, 2022. An application, the application was deemed to be a Type 1 action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and Part 1 of the Long Environmental Assessment Form was prepared by the applicant. The Town of Victor Conservation Board reviewed the plans on July 19th, 2022. A sidewalk was done on August 5th, 2022, with comments provided. Ontario County Planning Board reviewed the project pursuant to the General Municipal Law, Section 239N, and provided comments back to the town on July 13th, 2022. Coordinated fire service review was completed on June 29th, 2022, and comments were provided. LaBella Associates reviewed the preliminary subdivision and made comments in a letter dated July 22nd, 2022. Code Enforcement reviewed the preliminary plan on July 18th, 2022, and provided comments. The Town of Farmington Water and Sewer Department reviewed the preliminary plan on July 19th, 2022, and provided comments. The Town of Victor Highway Department reviewed the preliminary plan on July 19th, 2022, and provided comments. The Town of Victor Stormwater Management reviewed the plans on July 6th, 2022, and August 8th, 2022, and provided comments. The Town of Victor Parks and Recreation Department reviewed the plans on July 19th, 2022, and provided comments. Pursuant to Section 27-8J of the Town Code, a recreation fee for each lot, or in the event of multiple dwelling, a recreation fee for each family unit in lieu of parkland shall be paid to the Town of Victor prior to issuance of a building permit. Pursuant to Section 27-8 of the Town Code, a one-time charge for new connections to the consolidated sewer collection system shall be paid to the town before issuance of a building permit. 19. The Town Engineer has previously advised that sanitary sewer pump station PS 7, located at the corner of East Victor Road and New York State Route 96, is at capacity with the approvals of Blue Mountain Rise Subdivision and Victor Jeep Site Plan. An updated evaluation was conducted by LaBella Associates between October and December 2021, using pump runtimes from January 2020 through October 2021. LaBella assessed pump station capacity, existing flows, and projected flow rates within the near-term build out of Southgate Phase 2, west side of East Victor Road, 15 lots only. Along with other approved projects under construction, Blue Mountain Rise and Victor Jeep PS 7 would be at capacity considering the station is well-maintained and ongoing construction results and no increase in extraneous flows, inflow and infiltration. The subdivision involves donation of land to the Town of Victor that can be used for parking for the Auburn Trail. The applicant coordinated with the Town's Director of Parks and Recreation and the Victor Town Board on the amount of land to be donated and configuration of parking. The Victor Town Board conveyed their favor of the proposal at the September 26, 2022 Town Board meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the preliminary subdivision application, BRW of Grease LLC, Major Subdivision, entitled Southgate Hills 3 Subdivision, drawn by BME Associates, dated June 21, 2022, last revised August 8th, 2022, received by the Planning Board, June 21st, 2022, Planning Board application 3PS 2022, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions that must be met prior to the chairman signing the preliminary subdivision plans, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid, as for fee reimbursement, local law adopted November 25th, 1996. That Section 4 standard approval conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor, of the Town Design and Construction Standards shall be met. Comments in a letter dated July 22nd, 2022, from LaBella Associates be addressed, and the Town Engineer confirms that the preliminary subdivision plan set is suitable for Planning Board Chair signature. That comments from the Town of Farmington Water and Sewer Department dated July 19th, 2022, be addressed, and that comments from the Town of Victor Stormwater Program Manager dated August 8th, 2022, be addressed. And conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to, major subdivision comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for land development, including Section 4, that all conservation easement markers are shown on the final plans, and should underground water, should underground water conditions be encountered during construction, the developers to address the encroachment and impact to the underground water conditions to the satisfaction of the Town Engineer, and that no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for any building permit until such time that the Town Engineer confirms in writing that Pump Station 7 improvements have been completed and that Pump Station 7 can accommodate sanitary flows from the project. Be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary forward a copy of this resolution to the applicant.
Wes? Lisa caught a statement above about the plan. Is it, does it need to be updated, the one, this plan that was submitted, was it yesterday, Lisa?
As last revised.
Yeah, so it should be the one that's current, that was approved by the Town Board? Unless that?
You speaking of the state right here, August 8th?
No.
I don't know if that shows.
Is there another date that's?
Open, August 31st was the one that we took to the Town Board.
August 31st.
August 31st, Town Board.
Yeah. That's just, I mean, the only thing that changed was that open space area.
And it says August 31st.
31st, 2020.
Then it should say received by the?
Town Board.
Town Board, or?
I sent it to Lisa, too, though.
You received it yesterday, June 20th? No. Received by the Planning Board, that's not June 21st, right?
No, I think that's okay. I think the way that it is, is okay. We received the application. I think the next line down says we received the application. That's the date that we received the application. Yes.
Not the drawing.
That's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Kim.
All right. And just for an update on Pump Station 7, that project did go out to bid. Bids were received, I think it was last week, by the town. Bids were opened last week. I don't know what the conclusion of the bids are, but just to let you know that that project is moving forward.
Oh, the applicant still understands that they can't get CVO until, or can they start building before that's done? How's that work?
Well, as this resolution reads, this would allow them to, actually, this preliminary plan resolution wouldn't allow them to construct, to get a building permit. But going forward, if the Planning Board were to entertain a resolution in the final subdivision stage and be consistent with this resolution, that would allow them to apply for a building permit, but not, but not obtain a CVO until such time that the Town Engineer confirms that Pump Station 7 has the ability and capacity to handle flows.
So is that a building permit for the project, as in roads and infrastructure, or building permit for individual homes? Thank you, Kim.
It would be building permits for individual homes.
So they can go ahead with this?
They can do their construction, their infrastructure, yes.
All the infrastructure.
Correct. And full building permits. They would not be allowed until their pump station is up and running to get a certificate of occupancy. That's consistent with Phase 2 also. You, I think that was a condition of Phase 2 also.
All right.
Okay?
Any questions from the board? Al?
I'm okay with it.
You guys want to entertain this resolution as we've discussed and Al and Wes has presented?
Sure.
I'll listen for a motion.
I'll move it.
God makes a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll second.
Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried, four, zero.
Thank you.
Hey. Thanks, Wes.
Thanks, Wes.
Next application or applications would be Victor Square Retail Expansion, Victor Crossing Parking Expansion, I believe. James, we're doing both together, is that true?
We are doing both together. There are five and six, I think, on the agenda. James Baglioli, Attorney for Bendis Development, 570 Delaware Avenue, Buffalo, New York. I know we've gone over this project a bunch before, but I'll give you the update. We loaned a shopping center. It's on New York City 96. I need this one. It's got the 56,000 square foot commercial building, and then the two driveways that merge into one, and they share a signal of Victor Crossing. And we were proposing a 4,000 square foot addition. This is the original plan off here. And then we were going to leave the driveways in this configuration. The Planning Board asked us to take a look at cleaning that up to make it flow better. We did do that. And we reworked the plan to have one driveway that comes right in front and a small parking field to the right of the building. It completely avoids the conservation area that was up here. It's on the civil site plans. It's shown there, so you know we avoided it. It adds about 23 parking stalls to the site, which covers more than the additions required for the 4,000 square feet, which is about 18 parking stalls. So we actually accommodated for the expansion. It does clean up the. It does clean up the driveway, completely brings all the traffic in front. Trucks can then swing around this way and get to the back, so it's actually a nice, it breaks it up really nicely. We got the variance from the zoning board last week for both sites, so we're clear to move forward with it. I don't think there were any other comments really to address at that point. The one other comment, one of the neighbors asked us to plan some additional landscaping. He gave us a plan. We did propose that landscaping, it's shown on the plan. We did go out there, it is really thick green space. We actually had a hard time trying to figure out where to squeeze the landscaping in, but we managed to put some additional evergreens in there, so that should solve any concerns he has.
And I believe you're finished with the exit, right in, right out?
Yeah.
Entry from 96.
Yes, yep. So, and that was approved the last round, so that was just being done now. DOT always lags behind the planning board as far as approvals go. I know you're aware of that. So I don't believe there are any concerns at this point. Have you answered any questions?
It is, the public hearing is still open, so let's throw it out to the public first, if there's anyone from the public that has any questions for the applicant or the board. You're welcome to come up to the microphone, identify your name, address.
I'm Stephanie Feliz. I live on Sagamore Way. My one question is, with the addition of the 40,000 square foot building, what's the use?
It's a fourth-
4,000.
James, step right up.
It's a 4,000 square foot building, it's a sleep number. They sell, it's just a mattress display store. So they don't actually deliver any mattresses out of there. Mattresses are sort of sold out there. You look at the inventory, you order what you want, they deliver from their warehouse.
So it's already rented out?
Yes.
Anyone else from the public, questions? Hearing none on what is amounts to be-
Move to close it?
Thank you, Joe. I hear a motion to close from Joe.
Second.
Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Any questions remaining from the board? Joe?
I'm glad you brought up the status of the plantings. I was, I was curious about that, so I'm glad you got that done.
Yeah. It was tough to kind of fit them in. It is really thick out there. We had our engineer go out there and take a look at it, but we fit a number in, it should fill in any gaps that are there.
How big are the evergreens?
They're going to be six, five to six feet when they go in, but they grow.
Oh, sure.
Extremely fast, so that's a good size evergreen to put in.
Super. Thank you.
Al?
I have nothing to add.
Hey, Al?
All set.
I'd like to redesign.
Thank you.
And I'm sure I'll be happier driving through there than I have in the past.
It was before the meeting, and I think it'll be a much better improvement than what's, how it works now. I watch people come in, so it should be good.
Joe, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Or two, maybe? What you're depicting up here, is this, is this also include the land bank parking? I might have missed part of your discussion.
Yeah, so we originally got to land bank it, but it's an additional eight stalls. We're just going to put it all in because it'll provide better truck access across the side. So we have a plan. We proposed it. We always showed it as approved, saying we'd put this in later, possibly, but we do want to put it all in now. It actually flows a lot better.
For the few spaces you're talking about, it's cheaper just to put it in?
Put it in now than to put it in later, because you're going to go in, and it also allow the trucks, instead of coming in here and trying to cut this corner, they'll just be able to swing in this way. It actually improves the truck flow.
And that kind of dovetails into my next question about, there was a turning template for a particular truck vehicle on one of the, on one of the design plans. And is it that vehicle that would be able to navigate that, that curve there?
Yeah, and that's what's, and that's what's using that site.
Okay. Got it. All right. So that's helpful. So I don't remember the date of our initial comment letter. I can look that up, but we're in the process of updating that. Roof drainage, would you be able to speak at all to the, about how this new roof drainage will be handled? Is that going to be tied into the existing stormwater management system?
Existing stormwater manager system.
Okay, I think that's it. Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. I think that's all we have from the board, so we do have a couple of resolutions, one for each site, which I will read. Unless you have an objection.
I have no objection.
Okay. All right, starting with Victor Square Building Edition, Application 15SP 2022 at 420 Commerce Drive. Whereas Planning Board made the following findings of fact, and there are 14 of them. Any specific ones, Wes, I need to point out, or we all set? Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on September 27, 2022, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Victor Square Retail Expansion will not have a significant impact on the environment and that a negative declaration be prepared. Be it further resolved that the application of Benderson Development Company LLC site plan entitled Victor Square Retail Expansion, drawn by Costage Engineering dated October 6, 2021, received by the Planning Board June 4, 2022, last revised August 9, 2022. Planning Board Application 15SP 2022 be approved with the following conditions. August 9th date is correct? Wes? Nor James?
Off the top of my head, I don't know right now. It seems like we submitted after that.
That's what they submitted.
And that would be correct.
Okay.
That meaning, that would be correct. Yeah.
All right, no problem. It just seemed earlier than I expected to see. Be approved with the following conditions, conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan. No final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, that the comments in a letter dated July 11 from LaBella Associates be addressed. Three, that the comments in a letter dated June 13, 2022 from Zaretsky Associates be addressed. Number four, that the comments in a letter dated July 1, 2022 from Architect Consultant be addressed. Five, that comments from the code enforcement officer dated August 16, 2022 be addressed. Number six, that comments from fire marshal dated August 15, 2022 be addressed. Excuse me. And that comments, number seven, comments from the Town of Farmington Water and Sewer dated June 29, 2022 be addressed. Ongoing conditions, one, site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Number two, sign, that a signed permit be obtained for any signage proposed. Number three, that conditions in the area variance granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals be adhered to, and be it further resolved that Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do I hear a motion for that resolution?
I'll move.
Al moves?
Second.
Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried 4-0. And then the resolution for Victor Crossing Parking Expansion. Application 23SP 2022. Whereas Planning Board made the following findings of fact, and there are 11 of them. Number nine, what's the date of the letter?
July 11th.
Thanks, Wes. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on July 26, 2022, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Victor Crossing Parking Expansion will not have a significant impact on the environment and that a negative declaration be prepared. And be it further resolved that the application of Benderson Development Company LLC site plan entitled Victor Crossing Parking Expansion, drawn by Costage Engineering dated October 6, 2021, received by the Planning Board June 4, 2022. Planning Board Application 23SP 2022 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan, number one, standard. Number two, comments in a letter dated July 11, 2022 from LaBella Associates be addressed. Number three, comments from the code enforcement officer dated July 5, 2022 be addressed. Number four, comments from the fire marshal dated June 27, 2022 be addressed. Ongoing conditions, number one is standard. Number two, conditions in the area variance granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals be adhered to, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do I hear a motion for that resolution?
I'll move it.
Al makes the motion?
Second.
Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried 4-0.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Item number seven, Maguire Parking Expansion, formerly New Tex. Public hearing is still open on this application. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. Well, after the last couple of meetings, we, we went back to the drawing board, talked with the owner, and he was willing to make a bunch of concessions just based on his urgency on the west side. The west side faced a lot of pushback, and we ultimately just didn't have the answers, and we didn't have the, the time needed to go down that route, so we modified our application to only include items on the east side, the parking lot side. This was the addition of two new docks. Four existing loading docks, two additional ones to make a total of six, and reorganized to fit the interior layout. Minor, minor grading to help extend this, this four-foot loading dock pit, and that is the extent of the work at this point.
Does the board have any questions before I open it back up to the public?
I just wanted to confirm, so you're really just disturbing an area that's already been disturbed, right?
Oh, yeah.
So it's, it's not really native land or anything?
No.
So, I think that simplifies your application.
Yeah, for sure.
Tremendously.
Yep.
I agree.
Yeah. And you got rid of the ramp in the middle of the park, loading dock, you moved it all the way over to the other side, so that certainly, to me, makes it a lot simpler and-
Yes, cleaned it up pretty nicely.
Yep, so. Al, any questions?
No.
No questions or comments? Public hearing's still open. Is there anyone from the public here that has a question regarding this application that they'd like to bring before the board or the applicant?
We had a letter, but I don't see it in my packet from-
You're right.
Amy Bartel. Am I missing it?
Yeah, it was actually on the beginning of the packet.
I believe a lot of that doesn't apply anymore, because she had many comments based on Old Dutch Road, what was happening over there.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, just a pretty straightforward letter regarding the changes that you made in the reduction, significant reduction in impact in her, from her perspective.
Uh-huh.
So, okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Wes, any comments?
We just made a couple of very minor comments on this revised application where the only improvements are on the east side of the building. So we did receive a response back with, and they provided a, a cut sheet for the proposed, there's a new light fixture proposed, and that's really the only thing that's, I want to use the word significant, but it's really not that significant, so that was the biggest item. So we're all set.
So it, it seems to me that you're not addressing anything on the west side of the building, including landscaping?
Correct.
Okay. So that's totally off the table.
We removed everything. When that happens and when he wants to move forward with that, we know that we have to-
Okay.
Come back, so.
All right. Good to know. That's the only thing I had, honestly. So if, with that, if the board is interested, we can entertain the resolution that we had for a draft? Resolution, Maguire Parking Expansion, Application 20SP 2022. Whereas Planning Board made the following findings of fact, and there are nine of them. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on September 27, 2022, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Maguire Parking Expansion will not have a significant impact on the environment and a negative declaration be prepared. And be it further resolved that the application of Mitchell Design Build Site Plan entitled Maguire Parking Expansion, drawn by Mitchell Design Build dated July 19, 2022, received by the Planning Board July 19, 2022, last revised September 15, 2022. Planning Board Application number 20SP 2022 be approved with the following conditions. That no, conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan. Number one is standard. Number two, that the comments received in a letter dated September 25, 2022 from LaBella Associates be addressed. And the ongoing condition, number one, the site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
I'll move it.
Got moves?
Second.
Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number eight, Victor Chrysler Dodge Ram and Jeep Car Wash. Public hearing is still open. Good evening.
Good morning, board. Or good evening, board. Excuse me.
Long day.
Starting into the next one, apparently.
This is our second time back. Public hearing's still open. We met with the county the next day after we were here last. They just had a minor comment about maintaining the fire lane in between the proposed car wash and the existing fire lane. So the main concern last time we were here was with the capacity, the sanitary flows that are going to go to Pump Station 7. We prepared a letter that was sent back before this meeting that kind of spelled out the calculations for why we still have sanitary capacity. It basically came down to that we installed our own private pump station that's going to be injecting flows upstream of Pump Station 7 at a rate of 40 gallons per minute. And that's regardless of what's collected upstream. So with that 40 gallons per minute being the capacity that was approved by LaBella, our engineers report only had about 20 gallons per minute coming from the dealership. So, you know, that leaves us in excess of around 20. And with the two bays being installed, they're at about 8 gallons per minute per bay, so that'll bring us to, up to 16 additional, which will put us at 36, which is still below the capacity of the private pump station. So either way, it's going to be feeding the public system at 40 gallons per minute. That doesn't even include the fact that we're moving washing operations from inside the building to the exterior laser wash. We're also including a water reclamation system that's rated up to 60 gallons per minute. So with that, I'd like to open it up to the board for any questions.
Did you say you sent a letter?
It was like a half hour before the meeting.
Oh, okay. I didn't get a letter, so, okay.
This is still an open public hearing, but Wes, I know that you may have some comments about what the materials we've received since the last time we saw them.
Yeah, so we did issue a letter recently, and one of the things that we were, we were looking for is we were looking for the applicant to provide a plumbing plan for the proposed car wash, including details for water reclamation. And maybe that's something that you've provided in your, in your letter, maybe you've alluded to that, as well as the calculations for the proposed design. So in, you know, just kind of glossing over the 40 gallons per minute, maybe that was approved as part of the car wash, or, I'm sorry, the, the car dealership alone back in, maybe it was 2021, 2020, 2021. And as long as we're staying in that same area, if we're not exceeding, you know, the 40 gallons per minute, if that's what it was, then I, I think LaBella would be pretty comfortable with moving forward, but we'd like an opportunity to just take a look and review that information so that we can be sure we're okay. So, and just, just so you know, well, they could get a, well, I won't speak to the certificate of occupancy, but Pump Station 7 today, we know could accommodate the flows for the car dealership, right? They kind of ate up some of the remaining capacity. And, and what we're saying, or what the applicant is saying, as you heard, is that they wouldn't be exceeding the flows that were previously approved. So, I think we're okay with that.
So, before you approve, before we, as a board, approve the car wash, you would want to review the...
I'd like to take a look at the, at the calculations and the design and...
Okay.
Yeah, the information that they've provided.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah. I'm just thinking the timing-wise here. It's, it's an open public hearing. I'd like to see if there's anyone from the public that has any questions before we move Hearing none. We're seeing no one approaching. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move that.
Got moves?
Second.
Go seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
4-0. Public hearing is closed for Victor Chrysler Dodge Ram and Jeep Car Wash application. So...
Do we make that a condition?
I was going to suggest a condition that Wes be able to review and accept the calculations or recommend, at least from that, that...
Yeah, I mean, we could provide, once Lobella has the opportunity to review the material, we'd be happy to provide some written documentation for the, for the town's file, you know, affirming that we're okay with flows.
And you were a little uncertain about the original 40 gallons?
Correct.
Probably want to match that in your documentation as well.
Correct. Correct.
So, Lisa just reminded me, we don't have a draft resolution put together for this.
Oh, there we go.
So, I think that by default then gives you enough time to review it for the next board meeting. So, we can go ahead and get that draft together, give Wes an opportunity to review and make his recommendation for that, and then we can address it at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Joseph.
I had one related question of the 40 gallons per minute. Is there a, I mean, 40 gallons per minute is a rate. Excuse me. Is there any type of volume consideration? I mean, they can pump 40 gallons per minute for one minute, and that's 40 gallons, right? You pump 40 gallons per minute for an hour, that's a lot more.
Was that a maximum, I guess?
I'm just wondering, is there a, does Pump Station Number 7 have restrictions on not only the rate at which it comes into it, but also the volume that comes into it?
Yeah. I think that's an excellent question, and that's something I'm going to rely on our experienced civil engineers like Mike Chaffron and Jason Ebs.
So, they'll look at the data coming in right now that you have available and then see how much volume over how much time?
Yep.
That makes sense. And is that 40 gallons just a consistent flow, or 20 gallons, or whatever it is without the car wash?
Typically sanitary hydraulic loading rates is measured in flow. So, you know, your peak flow is calculated, and our peak flow is kept at 40 because the private pump station is in the ground. So, you know, no matter what comes into that pump station, what's leaving it is going to be at 40 gallons per minute. Right now, our estimations are that we're going to be supplying around 20, and then, so we're under capacity. But either way, the pump station will wait to fill up until it hits its alarms or its floats, and then it'll still dump at 40 gallons per minute regardless. So, that's basically a control that's locked in based on the approval of that private pump station in the previous application.
Okay.
I think it's kind of like other items that we've come up with, like the access, for example, getting, getting, you know, Lobella's comments and review on that level of quality control, if you will. I think that's a good thing to have.
Sure. Okay. I think we have a path forward to the next meeting, and I think we should be in a good position to move forward with it.
Quick question, not related to sanitary sewer. Is there any exterior lighting going to be mounted on the new building, or the proposed building?
The area lighting, you know, will cover the foot candle requirements because we didn't have to move anything, and those lights are going to be above the roof line. So, I will have to follow up. I know there's some architectural comments that, you know, we're going to be issuing. So, that will include any building-mounted lights that would be proposed and give you a comprehensive package that will answer the architectural comments as well as the site comments.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. I think that's it for, for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
You too. Item nine, Auction Direct Charging Stations. The applicant is requesting approval to install two public charge point dual port stations, a new utility pole and conduit at the pre-existing Auction Direct setup. Good evening.
Evening. Terry Heiss, McFarland Johnson. We've been working with Auction Direct on their request to install four new parking spaces and two charging stations at their Route 96 site. These charging stations are necessary as Auction Direct sells electric vehicles and plug-in hybrids. Both require regular charging. Currently, they're using wall outlets for that charging, which is really not as efficient as the Level 2 charging stations that are proposed. Demand for electric vehicles has increased quite a bit and will probably continue to increase in the foreseeable future. So, this dedicated electrical service is really kind of critical for their business. We did receive just today a letter from the town engineer stating that all comments had been addressed in this site plan. If you guys have any questions or comments, get her answered.
Joe?
The location suggests that this is available for your customers, maybe to use while they're, they're shopping.
That's correct. That's correct. It won't be in a gated area of the lot, so it'll be right out there in front for any of the customers to use.
And then the vehicles that you're actually buying and selling will be charged here as well, or will they be charged somewhere else on your facility?
No, they'll be charged there as, as necessary.
Okay.
So, we think that the, the two ports for two charging stations will be adequate for those needs.
I'm good.
Tom?
I think you were before the town for a variance, perhaps, to enable additional parking closer to the right-of-way, and you achieved that. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
That's what the hatched area is?
Correct.
Yellow hatch. Where we see the four parking stalls with the EVs, is it, is it a safe assumption to assume that more will be constructed along that row? It's currently showing just like soil, raw soil at this point?
Yes. That is correct.
And then...
Wait, let's step back to that question. You're saying more than four will be needed in the future? Is there like...
Yeah. Are you, are you planning on expanding into that, that area after the four that you construct? Will it be a possible future?
It's possible. I can't, I can't speak to the, what the future requirements will be or where they will go.
Okay.
And then I was curious, and I guess this coincides with the code enforcement comment. I'm curious as to the illumination of this device. What does it look like at night?
Yeah. So, it does have a small six-inch square screen that is only illuminated when it's actively being used. And it is also auto dimming, so you're not getting blasted by bright light, you know, after the sun goes down. Also, they're facing away from Route 96, so there shouldn't be any additional light spillage to the general public onto Route 96.
Okay. And the code enforcement person says that they're to be turned off a half hour after the end of business. Does that sound right?
Yes.
You mean, you couldn't have someone charge their car at 2:00 in the morning? Is that what he's...
That's, yeah, that was the intent there. Someone's not just going to pull up in the middle of the night and...
It's not just lights. It'll be everything, it'll be shut down.
Correct.
You won't have anyone on your site after hours.
I think, I think that, that's good.
I've got one more question.
Go ahead, Joe.
I note that you're going to add a utility pole as well?
Utility pole is already, is already been added within the DOT right-of-way. RG&E coordinated with New York State Department of Transportation to get that installed.
Okay. So, we're going aerial across 96?
It is, it's on the same side as Auction Direct. So, there's an additional pole, and then they will install conduit and wiring to the transformer.
But the, the actual feed to that new pole comes from the opposite side of the street?
Yes, yes. Sorry. Misunderstood.
So, just in terms of, you know, structure, infrastructure, that there was any discussion about directional boring under 96, so we can eliminate another overhead line?
That is in RG&E's court, so unfortunately, I don't know if that discussion took place or not.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Al? No further questions? Okay. I guess I'll expand a little on Scott's comments regarding the number of slots you may need in the future and the location of these, because you're, you're building them closer to the road than the setback allows. If you're going to add more in the future, because I would imagine that the more years come along, the more electrical, electric vehicles you're going to have, the more charging stations you're going to need.
Sure.
That means you would have to spread out even further along the front of your facility to do that.
Correct.
Correct? I guess, this one here? I thought it because it offset it. There was a difference in setback.
Not for nothing, Joe, the existing spaces, or the spaces that we just added could be converted.
Right.
Easily enough.
Well, but that's not where the power's coming. I mean, the power's going over to where those are, so you'd have to link them along.
You can run it over.
Okay. Wes, any other comments from your perspective?
No, they've addressed the comments that we initially provided, I don't know, a month or two ago. Thank you for the updated site plan. It's very helpful. The details on the site plan were helpful. That really spells it out well. So, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Can we just close the public hearing?
I think we need to, all right?
Can we close the public hearing? Okay. Is there anyone from the, I'll ask again, intending that, which is to speak or ask questions of the applicant or the board? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Some move.
Go moves?
Second.
Scott's got it. Give it to Scott.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Carried 4-0. And if you guys are okay, I have a draft resolution to read. Hearing no objection. Resolution for the Auction Direct Charging Stations, Application 09SP 2022. Whereas Planning Board made the following findings a fact, and there are seven of them. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Auction Direct Site Plan entitled Auction Direct Charging Stations, drawn by McFarland Johnson, dated September 7, 2022, received by the Planning Board September 9, 2022. Planning Board Application 19SP 2022 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid. Ongoing conditions, number one, that the site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do I hear a motion for this resolution?
Move it.
Scott, moves?
Second.
Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
I suspect the next one is what you've all been here waiting for. N86 Strong Road subdivision. The public hearing is still open. The applicant has, is requesting approval of, to subdivide 34.42 acres parcel into 11 single-family lots, including an existing house and garage. This will be the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. Sketch plan was acknowledged complete June 8, 2021. We have received several correspondence items on this one. Most recently, from Bill Kaiser, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, which included some slides, and from David Arico yesterday or today, I think, right? Dolores Fant, today. Thank you. I knew there was a third one. Okay. Mr. Elgin.
Good evening.
How are you?
You guys must have flew today. I thought I'd be down at 10:00.
Well, there's a lot of people in front of all of these folks, so try to get things, keep it moving along.
I'm glad I didn't get here late. Okay. Back here again for Tenny, 6 Strong Road. We were here about a year ago, actually, with the first plan. The first plan is down here on the board, and the second plan, the one we submitted, is on the screen, and we attempted with that plan to address some of the character of the neighbor comments that we heard from the, from the citizens. Like Joe said, it's 34.4 acres, 11 lots, including the Ott Homestead, which is at the southeast, southwest corner of the property at Strong and Taylor Road. 11.5 acres of woods in the back southwest corner. It would all be in a conservation easement. The plan is in R2 zone, but is in a overlay district, residential overlay District A, which means you can't do more than one lot per three acres, 233 acres per lot. So, that works out to 11 lots, which is what we're proposing. We're proposing a variety of lot sizes, and we've changed that some. I'll get into that in just a minute here. The minimum lot width we have is 150 feet for lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, which are the ones furthest to the west. Do you have a pointer here? Is this the pointer? So, those four. And then they, and then they go up from there, 108, a couple 180s. This one's 200 at the back, and these are 350, 400 area in that, for those lots there.
Just for everyone's information, the backs of those four left westernmost lots, there's a line just by the wood line?
Yeah, that's the conservation easement line.
Those are conservation easements, but they're still owned by the people?
They are.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. So, there's no common land, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
We're just putting the required 50% open space in a conservation easement.
Okay. Thank you.
So, in an attempt to more replicate what's on the other side of the road, and you can see it here from the aerial photograph, a lot of these lots have vegetation in the front, and houses are pushed back a bit and so on. So, we're trying to replicate that the best we can, but we have constraints of our own property. The first constraint is site distance. There's a hill right here, and then right here. So, we need to provide a location for site distance for this driveway, which is why that has that somewhat secured disrout. And we've got these driveways right here, which is at the top of a secondary hill, and then there's another secondary hill down here. So, the driveway, so the topography of the road itself dictated where the driveways went. And from there, of course, that's where the lots would be as well. So, what we wanted to do here is do plantings all the way along Taylor Road as shown here. Where there isn't plantings now, there are some existing trees in this area and then some in this area. We would obviously retain whatever's more mature vegetation, but supplement there. So, we're trying to replicate the somewhat screen view you have of the homes on the opposite side of the road. The first plan, as you can see, we had three lots that be, 5, 6, and 7, that were pushed up close to the road. The situation, that was, that was for these lots right here. Situation there is when you come off from Taylor Road, the, the land rises up 2 to 6 feet quickly, but then drops down into a draw and then rises back up again. Let me show you this highly ethical ground. Lots 1, 2, and 3, which are here, 1, 2, 3, the ground rises above Taylor Road, and we have to create a plateau. In this area would be the septic system, so we have to be at grade there. And then the further back we go, the more visible the house gets because it gets higher, but also the much more destruction of the hillside, we have to do pushing back towards the woodlots. So, that kind of established those house locations. I feel I pushed them back there between, I think it was about 85 feet. I feel I pushed them back there between, I think it was about eighty-five feet. Got it here. To a hundred and ten feet from the edge of pavement. Yeah, eighty-five feet to a hundred and ten feet from the edge of pavement, so they are, they are not right on top of the road. And there is, like I said, proposed vegetation in the front to help replicate what's across the road. But these rising topography lots, there's not a lot of choice in where you push the lots without further destroying the hillside. Lot four here is sort of in a transitional area. Transitional, lot four is down here. You can see it's down, the house, there's a dip, goes down, and then the house is pushed back. The other side of the, there's a draw or a valley that goes right through here. So that house is on the other side of the valley, and that was pushed back to a hundred and twenty-five feet from the edge of pavement. Then lots five, six, and seven, you can see right off the road, the land climbs sharply, two to six feet above the road, and then it drops down through a valley, and then it flattens out again on the other side, which is nice, because it makes a nice location for a house. So, so with those lots, again, to help push the houses back, which is similar to what's done on the other side of the road, we put those homes on the other side of the valley. Before, I had them on this side of the valley, and then I had to put the septic system in before you get to the valley. You can't put them, you can't put the septic system in the valley, so I had to move them all the way back to the other side of the road, which I think helps replicate again what's on the other side of the road. So with this revised layout, we have driveways located where they need to be located. We have thousand, twelve hundred feet where you won't see the houses at all, because of the topography and the locations and the vegetation. Then you have these three or four lots here, where you'll have a filtered view of the houses through the, through the trees that would be planted. And so lot eight, again, the driveway location is between the hills, and we push the house over here. There's, you know, this rises up quickly from the road, and there's existing vegetation there. So it's a nice effect, a buffering effect, nice tree lined all the way down through there. You know, there's some existing trees in here, there's a few spotted trees in here, and then there's some more trees over here that we'll save, and anything that's not there will supplement. To make that situation permanent, I was proposing to put those trees in a conservation easement, so they couldn't go in there and cut them down, since that was how we're trying to address this particular issue. Maybe it'd be somewhat of a modified conservation easement, because it'd be nice to be able to mow between the trees where you wouldn't normally be able to touch anything. There is the comments that I received from the town, from some of the neighbors. I'll just hit on some of them. There's an analysis of the existing lots as compared to the proposed lots. Within that analysis, it's showing that three of the lot, three of the six lots across the way from this are one point eight, three point one, and two point nine acres. Our lots are typically three acres and above over here. So we, we are consistent with that. These lots are wider, it just happened to be the lot configuration at the time that they built the lots. And, you know, we can't build on our site that ignores the topography and the site distance, and all the elements that are needed to do proper engineering and have a, a safe and beautiful subdivision. There'd also be some plantings in here, of course, to separate these homes from, from that. And, you know, these will be million-dollar homes, there'll be a lot of, there'll be a lot of landscaping. You know, go, go along with it. So again, three of the, three of the six lots the other side of the road are in the same lot size range. The other thing is I just eyeballed up and down Strong Road, and I found about twenty lots that are similar in size and width to the lots we're proposing. That was just an eyeball check, don't quote me specifically on that. So I think that is the crux of it. And I would be glad to answer questions.
Public hearing is still open, I don't know if there's any initial questions from the board before we open it up? Scott, or Joe?
I'd, I'd like to get a sense of your thought process when you're looking at the conservation easements. On lots, well, all the lots along Taylor Road, you're trying to preserve the existing trees. Can you characterize what kind of trees they are, are they hardwoods, are they?
They're hard, they're hardwoods, and they're scattered. There's, there's more of them over here, then there's just one or two in this area, and then there's some more over here. But it's not, it's not just the existing trees, it's the one we're planning to, planning, planning to plant, so that we can, again, sort of replicate the buffer along the road that exists.
And you're going to characterize that as a, as a no-touch, then, conservation easement?
As no-touch, except with a caveat, I think it'd be nice to be able to mow between the trees for, for these frontage lots. So, you know, the conservation easement back at the existing woods is no-touch, basically. But this one, I'd like to put a little variation on it, just so the homeowners can mow between the trees that are planted there.
Okay.
But they couldn't cut the trees down.
Sure.
That was the purpose.
You've, you've used open space conservation easements on five, six, and seven, as, as well as lot ten, and you're required to mark each corner, if you will, or each bend. So there's a lot for the homeowner to maintain, and typically, that four-by-four post is one of the first things that the homeowner removes.
Okay.
So you've got a lot of them there, and how do you propose to manage that? Have you given some thought?
I don't know.
Okay.
You know, I, I think the town could manage that if there's some concerns from citizens. The open space easement, to reiterate what I said when I was here a year ago, the intent there is, you should be, you could be able to garden, you could landscape, you could mow the lawn, but you can't build any structures.
There, there, there's really no difference between that and a lawn, then?
No difference other than you can't build structures.
So...
But that's what, you've got to understand, that's what this site has on it. It's a pasture, so most of the site itself is all existing pasture grass.
So the pasture may behave periodically, but it's typically longer grasses, golden rods, whatever?
Well, cows, they have fencing, they have cows grazing in there.
Sure.
I'm an adjacent farmer.
I'm, I'm questioning, too, if you look in the, I'll call it the back of lots five, six, and seven, it, it seems that one, two, three, and four have a lot of no-touch open spa, or no-touch easements in the back, whereas five, six, and seven are going to be allowed to mow essentially their entire three acres.
Well, back to the woods, yeah. So the woods is a no-touch open space, that, that's what defined that line.
And, and I guess in my mind, that defeats the purpose of having the conservation easements, if they can get back there with, with mowers and whatever else they, they choose to do. It just, and again, if I look at one, two, three, and four, a good half to two-thirds of their lots are no-touch, whereas five, six, and seven, I, I would love to see more of that in the back as a no-touch.
Okay, so I mean, I, I can tell you quite simply, I gave a distance behind the houses and created that line, so they'd be able to mow that area for sure. And then, you know, this area in here is what you're talking about. That, that could be more of a no-touch, but I think no-touch means it would remain as pasture land. Long grass, maybe that's what you want.
Sure, and that, that would keep it as pasture, what we're used to looking at when we're there. I understand the mowing towards the front of the property, I mean, that's, that the homeowner's probably going to want to utilize that space, especially along the driveways, he's not going to want that creeping in to the driveways. But certainly, in, in the back of the property, why not keep it as it is now?
I will have to discuss that with my client, but I certainly will take that under advisement.
And the little strip, if you look at the back, I think it's on lot ten and the back of lot eleven, just those little strips of no-touch, what are we, what are we preserving right in there?
Well, those trees.
Okay.
That we would plant, there's no trees there, there's no.
And what are you proposing to plant?
It would be mainly deciduous trees, but probably a mixture of conifers and deciduous to have a more buffering effect from, in this case, Strong Road, in the back of these lots.
Okay. I would, I would suggest talking to the town landscaper to see what, what would probably be appropriate.
Yeah, I think in, in, in the most case, you can tell by looking at the woods, it's mostly deciduous trees in the back here, but you see those spots of green, there are some evergreens, so.
Okay, I think that does it for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Al?
I think you have broken it up since the last version you presented in response to the comments that you received. I was just curious, do all the driveways, as shown, do they all meet the site distance requirements?
They do. Yep.
I have no further comments.
Al?
No, no more at this time.
Doug, question for me. You're showing kind of like a sawtooth thing right here?
Yeah.
Wouldn't they just go like a straight line?
Okay.
Right here, you've got two markers, not one. Here, you've got two markers, not one, you could eliminate and make it more direct if, if...
That's fine, I, like I said, Joe, I just, I can't remember a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I figured you were just doing an offset.
It was just a setback, I had it like that.
To Joe's point, practically speaking...
I don't care, that's, I mean...
That's a detail.
That's fine. Better, better, better definition, I think, is probably...
Yeah.
Because you don't see lot lines in the field, but you'll see the markers.
Sure.
That's, that's, that's a good idea.
Okay.
And, you know, per Mr. Limbeck's comments, you know, maybe some of that will be the more restrictive open space.
Okay. Wes, any comments before I...
No, I don't have any comments right now. Well, I do, thank you for providing this, this graphic, I know it was done with a marker and piece of paper, but it was very helpful for me to get an idea of, you know, what's going on there, that was helpful, thanks.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's tricky, I, you know, to be honest with you. I had to spend quite a lot of time with site distance measurements and determining exactly where to put the driveways, but, but that was, you know, a determining factor in the layout, right?
Well, I can see it, I'm looking at the Google Street View.
Yeah.
Of that.
Hill, then a hill, then a hill.
Very rolling, and you've got the ups and downs and everything else.
You've got three hills there, yeah.
I don't, I don't know if it's as dramatic as some of those that you're showing. It looks like it'll be fairly easy to grade through the, the berm near the road and that sort of thing.
There's, look, there's, as you get further to the west, that road get, that berm gets lower.
Yeah, okay.
And the other thing we could think about is, you know, maybe extending the berm a little bit. That would give a little more of this type of definition.
Okay.
And, and buffering, because a car sitting here can't see through that, right? Especially with the house chilling a little bit below the road. So we could look at putting some berms in the front there, too, yeah.
We'll probably see more detail as things progress.
Yeah, we, we, I mean, basically, we're here tonight to, you know, make sure we're on the right track, so we can move forward.
Oh, I actually do have a question, so Doug, is, is there any targeted square footage? Or, again, you mentioned roughly some pricing, so to give the local residents some idea of these thousand-square-foot ranch homes, or something different?
They're, uh, let's see, what's fifty by, well, fifty by eighty, about four thousand square feet on the first floor-ish, somewhere is in there.
Wow.
I don't know.
It's a big building, I mean, a big house, and it's a big building.
It'd be a big house, but, you know, most, most of them, I would think, would be three thousand or so, and then maybe some two-story on top of that, which would mean the footprint might be smaller. But, uh, yeah, I mean, they're expensive lots, and they're intended to be upscale lots with the million-dollar houses.
So they should be attractively constructed.
Yeah, and I think, I think that plays with, well, with what's across the street, to their many beautiful homes over there, including across the street on Strong Road.
So the public hearing is, is still open. If you wish to speak to, to the, toward the board, or ask questions of the developer, we ask that you, you know, keep your comments to within three minutes, and I will cut them off at five. So that having been said, the floor is open, if you wish to come up before the board, there's no particular order of who goes when, but identify yourselves, name, address, and...
My name's Tom Reese, I live at eleven sixty Strong Road. I only have a couple of questions.
So just for the orientation, north, south of Taylor?
Yeah, I, I don't know how this points, oh, there's a point, so there, I own that.
Okay, south of the project.
Yeah, yeah, I can't see any of it, but...
Yeah, no worries.
But the question I have is, I have a couple of them. Conservation Type A area, is that basically, you don't do anything with it, correct?
That's a no-touch, right, Joe? So yes.
Just as it is. So he does not identify the width of any of that, any of those no-touch? I, I looked at the second page.
The no-touch would be in the back of the lots, I believe, is that what they're saying is?
So I think they're, they're mischaracterized on the plant, the plant along Strong Road then.
Yeah, so if I look at that...
They're, they're more of an open space, if he's going to want the homeowners to be able to mow between the trees, then it's not truly a no-touch.
You can't call it Conservation A.
It's a, it's a conservation easement to the effect that it limits what the homeowner can do. It can be written so that they can mow, but they can't cut down trees, for instance.
So the town doesn't have the... I was at a zoning meeting, and I listened to a poor guy complain that he had put up a fence, or he had taken, there was a fence in there, and he had put a different fence in, and he was told he could never do anything in that area. So you're saying the developer can determine what goes in, a Type A or Type B?
The developer comes before the board and proposes the type of conservation easements that, that...
So the written conservation easement for A, Type A can be up to the discretion of the...
It's up to our judgment as to what makes sense in that area, if you want to retain or, or conserve woodland, you know.
Well, there's no woodlands now, except for...
Well, if you look at the creek, for instance, you don't want to have...
Yeah, yeah, all that, I can understand not touching any of that. But when I read that these are going to be a Type A conservation thing, I guess my question was, is there going to be a homeowners association that will maintain it so it's consistent? Or can this guy here let it all grow to weeds, sumac, and that's why I was wondering what the width was? They don't show any dimensions in here on the second page. And plus the fact, do they, how do they mark those? Like one comes off at an angle, the other one comes off at an angle?
Well, if they need to be delineated, because you can't do anything to it, then we have special markers on the property lines.
Like those concrete square things?
Well, not concrete necessarily.
There are four-by-four posts.
Wooden or?
Pardon?
Wooden or?
Wooden.
Oh, yeah, the wooden.
And we've allowed, we've allowed some developers to use things like boulders to mark them. That way, the homeowners are less likely to remove them.
And they won't deteriorate.
So it's not in their deeds, I mean, how would the homeowner know that that's restricted?
The, the survey will show.
It's, it's part of their deed, is the survey map. So the survey map shows what areas are conservation easements and what types they are.
So you're saying they would be like putting boulders in nice corners where they can't go around in it, so? Okay, that's fine. My next question is, lot number one, again, I don't know if any of you have been to the site area at all, you have? So did you look how far lot number one, where all of the trees and stuff are?
Well, you can, I look at it in, in terms of an aerial and from what I can see from the road. I don't go out and measure it, I don't think it's staked out.
I did, I staked it this morning.
I didn't, sorry.
Only, only because to put a house in there, he's going to have to destroy a ton of... I mean, I took pictures, because I, to me, what, what this Type A conservation is, it means it goes wild for everybody, you know, so, and now, you, you, you informed me that it's different, it's not that, you can...
Do you look at the conservation areas that we're asking for, and if it's a no-touch, or if it's a minimal maintenance, or it, you know, no-build, for instance?
But, but I guess my question is, if Jack's brat puts his there and lets it all grow up to sumac and weeds, and the guy next to him keeps it all mowed nice, who complains?
I would be the backdoor neighbor, I guess, you know, I, it's not, I don't think you're having homeowner associations, right, Doug? Or would there be homeowner associations? No.
I mean, to me...
People build million-dollar houses. They maintain their property, including their landscape.
I suspect that you, that anyone that's investing in a home there would want to maintain it.
I just wanted to make sure that town, there's a lot... I just wanted to make sure that town is allowing them to do that. I mean, if you look at that lot one, you go look at it.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's wheat trees on lot one.
Huh?
There's mainly wheat trees on lot one.
Well, Mr. I planted a whole bunch of pines in there.
Yeah, Doug, you really need to be up at the microphone for Lisa to pick all that up.
Sorry.
Doug, if you want to take the.
Hand mic, you can.
Hand mic, you can have it over there.
You can stand there, I'm not going to bite.
You can take it with you to the seat.
No, no, there, there is some trees on lot one with it. Basically, the whole area, back to where the conservation easement has, excuse me, has trees and heavy brush on it. We had to battle our way in there to get test bits and first tests.
So, I guess my question is, how will we be able to put a home in without destroying all of that stuff?
We, we are taking out the trees and brush back to the conservation line.
All the way back there.
I'll show you.
I know where it is, go ahead.
Yeah. So, so right in here.
Yeah.
This is, this has got trees and brush in it. So, we'd be removing back to this line.
And how are you getting down to the road? Because the road's like six, eight feet below that.
What? Now, the, the house, yes.
So, that driveway, is it going to have big swales on each side?
No.
All right, so I'm being a little generous with your time, but I'd like you to give an opportunity to other people.
The only other thing I want to bring up is, they keep referring to the creek as being intermittent. It is not intermittent.
Okay.
And the federal government spent twenty-some thousand dollars at my property.
Just so you know, I mean, that is a conservation easement, that whole creek through the entire area.
Be touched. Oh, I know, all that in the back, I'm not worried about that, I just was worried about the stuff.
No, it's fine, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Next.
Hello, it's nice to be here. I'm Ed Morrell, and I'm going to, I'm going to hear each of you.
Oh, Mr. Morrell, you can introduce yourself again when you get back up to the microphone for Lisa. Thank you.
I have enough copies for each of you. And this is for you to run it off, I couldn't get it to work. Okay, anyway, my name, my name is Ed Morrell, and I live ten eighty-three Harloff Road in the town of Victor. My property extends onto Taylor Road, and my wife and I have lived there for forty-two years. Now, I feel that this proposal does not at all meet the residential requirements, or should, or is meeting those residential requirements of fitting into the neighborhood. Number one, almost none of the houses, now, I'm talking about all the houses down Taylor Road, now, there's only a fifth of a mile to the end of Victor, and I'm way beyond. All those properties have an average of over five acres. If you average them up, many has got six, many have more, some have less. Okay, their acreage is three. Now, I've already gone to the board forty years, when was it, forty, maybe thirty-eight years ago? And I stopped a subdivision because it was in the will of the person I bought the property from. All right. This is, my main idea here is, this is completely inconsistent with the comprehensive plan of Victor. I've gone through the plan with a fine-tooth comb, and have pointed out in this document all the areas that the document talks about in reference to maintaining the residential, agricultural, rural, uh, values of the properties, okay? This file for needs that, okay? Another serious concern, not only is it the number of properties, it's what's the effect of a ten new septic systems on the aquifer below that land that we all get our water from? That is very concerning to us. So, the lots seem to be way too small to be consistent with the neighborhood. The drumlins, as you know, these beautiful rolling hills, they sort of end on this property. And so, there are some nice rolling hills with forests up above, but there are other properties that I make mention in the document I gave you, that are down the road, down Strong Road, that have drumlins as well, and it won't be long before they'll be in front of this board, destroying all that beautiful landscape to put many houses. This is the beginning. I'm asking the board to be consistent with the Victor plan that was adopted by the board years ago. I'm asking them to be consistent with it, and this plan is not consistent with it at all, and poses a lot of problems. The drumlins, such a glacial, you know, history, should be considered as a, as a suggestion here, for special recognition of less density. Now, I know that property owners, you know, have a right to sell their property and make a decent, you know, decent amount of money. And residents always complain, and I get that, but the inconsistencies here are dramatic on this property. If the property was flatland, okay, I could understand all these houses on that property, but it's not. It's rolling hills, it's beautiful, and it was at one time totally rural. So, as a neighbor, I know you're going to have a development. I get it, okay? But, too much, that's just too much. All those septic tanks and all of these, especially those four in a row, that's absurd. It really is. I can understand the properties on Strong Road maybe, you know, there's enough acreage there and so forth, but those first four, small frontage, okay, houses in a row, it's just inconsistent with the whole neighborhood. And the southwest edge of Victor is a spectacular edge of Victor, with all those beautiful drumlins. Please save them. Don't let them take them away from us. It's going to change the whole area of Victor. So, I thank you for this time, and I hope that you'd consider, and the developer would consider, changing the plan with more substance. Fewer houses, less septic, and of course, especially those first four, there's no room there for four houses like that, especially forty by eighty, or whatever you said. I, I can't believe it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morrell. If you stand right up and to the microphone and name and address, and glad to hear what you want to say.
It's Lynn Morrow, and I see from all the presentations that Victor is just booming and growing, and there is a wonderful history behind this area that is being stomped on. It is not necessary to do things so inconsistent with the rest of the neighborhood. It takes away from the beauty of Victor, and can I ask you, have any of you driven down that road at all to see it?
Many times.
You have? Well, then, you may possibly understand, row houses don't belong there, and even though the rows are a little bit broken up, it's, it's demeaning to the rest of the area, and also, it may raise our taxes as well, because they're supposed to be beautiful new homes. It is just changing the landscape, and some history of this area needs to be maintained by somebody. And I think as, who you are, the planning board, you should make plans to reserve the history. It's Native American land, it was all formed when the Great Glacier came, including the Finger Lakes, the Great Lakes, our whole area. You can go down Bouton Hill Road, and you will see all the housing going up, but it's relatively flat, and I understand people want to live in an area like that. And one of the problems too is, I may be for this before, but getting off of Taylor Road to make a left onto Strong is incredibly dangerous. I have been driven off the highway three times, and one time, I had a slam on my brakes to avoid a collision with somebody, you know, I always look to the left first, in case I have to get into the other lane, but you can't always, you can't see it until they're on top of you. And all these people living there are going to be in an area of danger, only because of this rapid growth of Victor that is neglecting its history and its citizens. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Annabelle Francieakis, I live at ten fifty Strong Road. We live in the barn. We're very close to the corner of Taylor. To me, this is, this plan is no better than the last plan. I think it's putting lipstick on a pig. He has made a couple of driveways longer. The two residences that he has on Strong Road, there's no reason to have them lined up like soldiers. Why could you not have them staggered? At least the properties are a decent size, there's no reason to have those houses plunked right on the road. The four houses, which everybody's, it looks like Henrietta. If we wanted to live in Henrietta, we'd live in Henrietta. We all came out here because we wanted to live in a rural area, and according to the comprehensive plan, that's what we're supposed to be in. All of us have lived here for a long time. It's changed dramatically, not for the better. This is making us sick. This is no better than it was. You've got to get rid of these houses in a row. We can't have this many houses, and they can't be up against the road. It's absurd. The houses on Strong Road, many of them have very long driveways. I know it's expensive. He's trying to do the cheapest he can possibly do, have short driveways, we know that's cheap. The whole thing says cheap, everything about it is cheap. This isn't what we have in our neighborhood. That's not what we want. Please, don't let this happen to us. It's making us very sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Tom Orr, and I live at eleven ninety-three Strong, that's just south of this. I'm sure you all know it's the pond, the large pond, okay? Now, this is, that's the third house that I personally designed and placed and everything else in my life, and no one's ever complained. I've never heard anything like this. I've had people come over to my house and have wedding pictures taken, because they liked that so much. There are four things growing on that lot that I did not personally plant. See how everything else is growing over there? All but four of them were put in by these hands. I can't do that anymore, I'm seventy-five, and that's, that's about it. Now, I have a slightly different view of this plan. I think that this is actually a major improvement over the original. This has made it all the way up to bad, and that's a huge improvement. My particular concern is, much like everyone else's, those four houses. Now, I think it's easy enough to fix that, or at least make it acceptable, get rid of lot number one completely, get rid of that house, and get rid of lot number three completely, and that will, will make at least those houses look a little better over there. Additionally, the two houses on Strong Road, is there any reason why those houses need to be so close to the road that it looks like Main Street Victor? It just doesn't need that. Now, I live on that house with the pond, that's at least three hundred feet from the road, okay? But yet, every time a motorcycle, or a hot rod, or an eighteen-wheeler goes by, I can hear that. And can you imagine, people, these houses, I, I was shocked when I just heard how big these things are. You think people are going to want to spend that kind of money, live in that big a house, and live that close to the road, and have these things come screaming by all the time? That's, they're just going to throw up on your shoes. I mean, that's, that's really awful. I mean, what kind of a teenager put this together? It just doesn't make sense. So, however, I could live with it, push those two houses on Strong back, get rid of lot number one and three, and maybe move number two back a little bit, and that, I think, might be, might be livable. I could live with that. I don't like it, but I can live with it. Now, what also surprises me is the big deal that was made over the size of the lots. It says, so much bigger than so many other lots on the, on the, the street. When it comes to, to fitting into the, to the neighborhood, the lot size is meaningless. What matters is the space between the houses and, and how many they are. Now, now, my, my property is only, what, twenty, two-point-six acres? Lot smaller than this. You look at my lot, it doesn't look like that. It's, everything is spread out, far away, it's a magnificent place, and it's only half the size of some of these things. Why? Because of the way it was, it was constructed. This is just really embarrassing, and I hate to see the town of Victor lowering the bar so far, so that this sort of thing can, can go through. It's just unacceptable. The only other thing was, we really need to get, I don't know how it gets done, but somehow, we have to get rid of this term intermittent stream, that's nuts. My pond is the source of that, that stream, and no matter what time of year, summer, winter, no matter how dry it gets, you can go to the outflow from my pond, and it's always the same, it never changes. You can go to the south end of my pond, you can actually see the water coming out of the hillside. That pot, that's not an intermittent stream. I don't know what nutbag named it that originally, but it's, it's, it's not an intermittent stream, and I would like to get it out of these documents. And, and, and the last thing is, there's a lot of talk in this document about listening to the neighbors, and we all know they didn't, and I'm tired of hearing that they did.
Thank you.
I know you don't like hats. My name is Philip Nelson. I live at seven nine seven six Taylor Road. It's literally across the street from seven or eight, one of those. A couple of comments, a couple of questions. First comment, this was, arrived at based on three acres per house, that's minimum. That's not a maximum, that's not a mandate, that's the minimum, and this was designed purely for financial optimization. That's how he came up with the number of houses. Secondly, a question, does this plan require review by the DEC? And if so, have they? Does anybody know?
What portion of the plan would be required to be reviewed by DEC?
I don't know. I'm asking a question, I.
The subdivision itself probably does not need to be reviewed by DEC. If there were impacts to a stream, a DEC classified stream, I think the planning board may want to seek maybe some input from DEC in that regard, but with regard to the subdivision plan itself, no, typically, those aren't reviewed by DEC.
Moving on, major concern, and this is my number-one concern I want to address here tonight, potable water for these houses. It's my understanding that they're proposing that municipal water be provided to these houses. Who's going to pay for that? Where's the water going to come from? There is, I believe there is a water main on Strong Road, there is no water main on Taylor Road. My house has a well, all the houses around me has a well, there's been a proposal in the past for a water district to bring in municipal water. It was soundly thrashed by the residents, we don't want it, we don't want to pay for it. I don't want to drink Monroe County water, it tastes bad. My water tastes delicious. So, what's the answer? Is, is this going to require a water district? If so, who votes on it? Who pays for it? Do you, do you have an answer?
So, I don't know that we're required to give answers during, during the public hearing, but we are required to listen to what your comments are. I don't know if any planning board members have an answer.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure we'll have some conversations with the developer.
Do you have an answer?
He may be able to answer some now, or maybe not, so.
I, I don't know, as I'm sure.
You need to step up.
Doug, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know for sure if there's a water district requirement, it's all Monroe County Water Authority. And I don't believe they have any district requirements.
So, are you? So, are you talking about-
But there won't be tax assessments.
So, water supply will be through public water lines on Strong Road into the subdivision?
Yeah, we're bringing water into the project.
You will be, you will be funding the cost-
We will fund it. We'll pay for it 100 percent. Water main, hydrants, everything. And then, of course, the folks, if they want to hook up, can hook up. One gentleman, he had a concern about septic system aquifer. I don't believe it's founded in this location with these sized lots. But if you wanted to make that less of a concern, they could hook up to the water, water main, it would be available to them, so.
Okay. Thanks, Doug.
Yep.
And we will be exploring questions that are brought up tonight, as well as other correspondence we've received over the course of our review of this project.
Well, would, would appreciate your getting a firmer answer to that question for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last time we were here, I, I said I was passionate that the Yankees were playing. They're playing again tonight. They're currently leading five to one.
But the question is, did Judge hit a homerun?
I don't know.
What's he up to now, 60, or is he more?
He's at 60.
Okay.
Wow.
Anyone else this evening?
My name is Maura Steed. I live at 1117 Strong Road, right across the street from those two houses on Strong. I am going to speak from the standpoint of, I am keenly aware of the fact that we live on land that was respected and taken care of, and the stewardship of the Native Americans. We have gone on again here. And in my mind, everybody who lives in Victor, especially in the area where we live, that has continued, they're trying to keep it low density, that I don't know how you can, can drive around Victor and see the Drumlins and see the land that has not been developed and not be moved by the fact that we are not being stewards of the land. And I, I am so grateful to have moved into this area. We, we moved here about 23 years ago. And were able to enjoy the stewardship of Tom Reese, as he had his livestock and his cows in the field. And there was, he took care of the fields on which we live, too. And it, it just seemed to me that we were paying attention to the environment and to everything about this rural town. And you think about it, the Seneca lived here and what they did. And then we moved in, and now we're, we're turning it into commercial land and developments. And there are ways of, there are ways of accommodating people without people destroying the earth. And when you look at the, when you think about the Drumlins, and if you, if you do any, if you do any research about Drumlins, and they're, they're not a common thing in the world. It is a very unusual thing. And we are, we are taking this land, and we're raping it. And it's like, hey, what difference? We don't need the farmland anymore. We'll get, we'll get our food from, I don't know, where else? Some other states, other countries. And in my mind, when I see what the farmers do in our area, they are so conscious of taking care of the earth and feeling blessed by it. And I, I just, I would like to have you all look at this. Developer, too. I'm, in my mind, I would like to have the land purchased and come under the guise of an environmental group, of future farmers of America. There are ways that the land can be preserved for what it does. And not, you know, we're not, there were people who tried to buy the, the property and, and who were going to keep it as it was. But there, the, the trust, the family, they, they were, had other bigger monies in mind. And that's very, very unfortunate because it really has taken this to a place that I think, as you are hearing, all of us who live in this area are really disturbed by it. And anybody who's gone up and down Strong Road for any length of time, this particular location, people stop all the time to look at it because it is so unique and beautiful. And I just would like you all to keep in mind the roots of Victor, the Native Americans, and what we are doing and what we need to think about. And it isn't just about numbers and placements of houses. That's certainly part of it. But it is about a really bigger visionary picture, and it is going to affect our generations beyond us. And it would be nice to have a legacy that really respects that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Bill Kaiser. My wife Joan and I have resided at 8008 Taylor Road since 1993. I'm here to express our strong objection to the revised 1086 Strong Road development. Could I have slide one? Okay, it's up. This is a very important map, not shown to you by the developer, but nonetheless worthy of your careful consideration. It shows the extreme contrast between the proposed slit lots and the expansive nature of the surrounding plots, particularly those north of Taylor Road. Those lots were created in 1981 by Carl Bellucci. He put his name, he put his, he put his name on them and proposed it as the Bellucci subdivision. It has become part of his legacy. I penciled in some things which I can't read. I believe, although I never met the man, Carl Bellucci, I believe he had a vision and a sensitivity to the land, and it's evidenced in the community character of this area that is so highly valued today by the current residents and protected by the Victor Comprehensive Plan. Even though the revised development proposal has improved somewhat, the average proposed lots are still one-half the acreage, 60% of the average frontage, and 80% of the average setback of existing lots. My calculations are in supplemental material which is sent along. Slide number two, please. I have a concern with the area in red shown here. There are four lots as compared with the two lots north of Taylor Road. These four lots have one-third of the average acreage, two-thirds of the average frontage, and three-fourths of the average setback. This is a concern to me because this section of the development will still have the appearance of closely spaced homes 75 feet apart, tightly squeezed into a row. The result will be a significant disruption to the established community character that we value. Slide number three, please. I am also concerned with the area outlined in orange. While the proposed development has, has improved setbacks, there are still three homes versus two directly across the street. The average frontage of these lots is still one-half of the average fronting, frontage of the two existing homes to the north. Next slide, please. I am most concerned that the developer is still trying to squeeze so many houses onto this property. The area in red on this illustration, in the southwest corner of this map, includes the conservation easement to the town of Victor labeled CE-1 on this, on the original proposal. It's not delineated here. I don't know why. But it's less than that. This easement protects the stream that several downstream residents have testified is ever-flowing, not intermittent. The existing Lot Nine is shown in the upper right-hand corner of the map. I calculated the maximum allowable lots on this parcel by removing the existing house and lot and the CE-1 conservation easement from the total acreage. This results in only 23.3 acres of buildable acreage. When the 0.33 lots per acre density limit is applied to two, to, I'm sorry, to 23.3 acres, only seven homes should be allowed. The revised proposal, while somewhat improved, still disregards the visual intent of the lot density maximum, squeezing 10 new lots into an actual buildable space that should accommodate only seven new lots. Next slide, please. This current proposal of 10 new lots is unacceptable, as shown in, outlined in red. I would prefer no development, shown in green. But if development is to happen, there are more reasonable solutions as the one shown in yellow. You notice it has, it took those four lots to the west and put two houses, two plots on them. And it has a total of seven. Next slide, please. In summary, I urge the board to reject this proposal and to honor and follow the mandates of the Town of Victor Comprehensive Plan. Namely, and I quote, "Ensure that all elements of Victor's community character valued by residents are preserved." And secondly, consider how the natural environment, the cultural assets, and the sensory, primary visual experience of a place, all combined to define the community's essential quality. These mandates take precedence over any other development considerations. The revised plan is better, but is still not acceptable. Just because this plan can be done doesn't mean that it should be done. Thank you for your careful consideration of our concerns. Thank you.
My name's Ken Fenton. I live at 8082 Taylor Road, which is northwest of the development. And the actual, the stream that goes along the back of that property goes for well over 1,200 feet over across my property. So, I'm very worried about pollution, whatever happens to that. The current plan, granted, they reshuffled the deck chairs in the Titanic, but it's still the Titanic. It's bad. The packing density is far too high. It should be closer to the seven to make it actually fit on the properties. I am worried about the quality of the water packing that much on the Drumlins, which is essentially sand, which really doesn't do a heck of a lot for purifying the water when you run something through sand. It's going to affect the people at the road. It's not going to affect me that much because my house is 780 feet back from the road. But, and it's on a different aquifer. But a lot of those people along the road, it's going to affect them without doubt over time. It's going to take a while, but it's going to affect them. The other thing is, the intersection between Taylor and Strong, that hasn't changed. It's still a dangerous intersection. Maybe it's time the town of Victor should look at that intersection and consider what they did with Mortencia. Maybe that Taylor Road, the end of Taylor Road should move to south of where that historic house is. Maybe the whole end of that road should be brought up there where it's nice and bright and everybody can see. Maybe that's where it should go. The other thing that I find rather disturbing is the developer, even after the meetings of last year, totally ignored the recommendations that were done by the board here to turn that into a cul-de-sac. They're doubling the number of roads that are essentially, or driveways coming out onto Taylor Road. You're going to undoubtedly have kids there. That is not exactly a safe road now for cyclists going up and down it. You would double the number of people going up and down that and that dangerous intersection. Something's going to happen there that's not going to be pretty. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I have another word? Quick one?
Quick one.
This is something that-
Sorry, just state your name again, please.
Oh, Tom Orr, O-R-R, 1193 Strong Road. This is, whatever happens there, it ought to be something that the town and all of the neighbors around are proud of. Right now, all the neighbors around hate it, universally hate it. Whatever you do there, make, make the neighborhood proud and make you feel like you did a good job. That's all.
Thank you.
I have one thing to say.
Come on up. Last one for the evening, I think.
George Baker, 1115 Strong Road. The traffic that's on Taylor Road and the traffic on Strong Road, especially Strong Road, is horrific. It's used as a speedway for a lot of people. And we try to walk our dog, or ride our bikes coming out of my driveway onto Strong Road, and it's like taking your life in your hands. Because shooting over that hill, that, that intersection of Taylor Road and Strong, cars just go careening over that hill, and by the time they get to my driveway, they're going 60, 70 miles an hour. And it's, it's really terrible. I think whether or without this development, there should be a stop sign there, a three-way stop. Because someday, somebody's going to get killed. And if that development goes in, it can't do anything to exacerbate the problem by creating more traffic getting onto Strong. And somebody's, it's just, it's, it's a tragedy waiting to happen. I just know it. So, whether or without the development, I would really lobby to see a, a stop sign at that. You can change the speed limits, but people don't care. Stop signs, they care because they, they get arrested for that. So, please, think about that. Thank you.
Doug, if you'd like to address anything that comes to mind?
Yeah, I'll address some of the comments.
The notes you've been taking profusely, I think?
Really?
You've been taking profuse notes over there, so I assume you have some things to say.
Talking about the Drumlins, I think it's interesting to note that there's every attempt here not to do grading on the property. The only grading we're doing is the first lots where it's necessary to create a, a building pad. And other than that, we're keeping the character of the topography just as it is. These lots are 150 feet wide. I mean, I'm sorry, they're not narrow lots. For any size house, 150- For any size house, 150-foot width is a, a wide lot. The, the comprehensive plan that keeps being brought up, the translation of the comprehensive plan is by the zoning code. Zoning code says the minimum lot width is 100 foot wide and, uh, and we're 50% more than that on, on every lot on the project. The, as I said before, that was a little bit misleading. Three of the lots on the opposite side of the road are smaller than three acres or equal to three acres. So in that regard, it's not a variation from that. The, uh, I can't read my reading, but, uh, the plan does, I think, take into account the character of the property itself from the standpoint of making sure that the grading fits best the topography. And with this new change, and I'll be, I'll be honest with you, that wasn't crazy about those three, those other lots closer to the road, but, uh, we couldn't affect the valley. So I was glad the developer allowed me to move them back behind the road. This is 2022. The land was expensive. We've got to bring in a lot of water main. We can't reduce the density, and the density is not high for the area. And as I said before, just an eyeball shot along Strong Road, I think there's about 20 or so lots that are similar size and similar widths. So there may not be along Taylor Road, some of those lot sizes, but certainly when you look at the overall character of the neighborhood. And finally, I think that the proposed plantings, the topography that naturally buffers the houses in conjunction with the proposed plantings do bring this in to a situation where it is replicant of the lots on the other side of the road. The first four lots that everybody keeps talking about, they do back into the hill. They're about 95 or so feet from the road. That is not short setback. I'm sorry. There's, uh, there's million-dollar houses that I've designed on 60-foot setbacks or 75-foot setbacks. So, uh, just want to point that out. And if you just look at it, the houses on the other side of the road, some are in that similar neighborhood. I think the comment about the Strong Road houses, quite frankly, I didn't pay enough attention to that. That, that is a good comment, and I, I will talk to the developer about moving those houses back. I think that, that makes a lot of sense. The, the creek being a perennial stream as opposed to intermittent, that's just from the DEC website. I'll be glad to change any documents if it is perennial. That's fine. I have no problem with that. And let's see. I'll tell you, the stop sign idea is not a bad one. It's not a good intersection. I, I have to admit it. As far as the polluting the, the stream, there is no part of the property, no part of the development prop, developed property that drains towards the stream at all. There's no hard surfaces that drain towards that stream at all. They all drain to the front. And I think DEC, there is no jurisdiction for DEC to do a review of this that I, that I'm aware of. And, again, I think the, the comprehensive plan, the guiding document that comes out of the comprehensive plan is the zoning code. So we have complied 100%, 150% with the zoning code. These are not small lots. They're not narrow lots. They're beautiful big lots, and the homes that will be built on them are beautiful. The, the landscaping that'll be put in will provide a replicant to what's across the street to help maintain that character of that particular street. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone from the board have any questions for Doug this evening? I, I had one question for you, Doug, and I'm looking at-
Yeah.
The, you know, the, the residents have made some comments about how close these houses are spaced.
Right, right.
And that, I look at these are, the ones, was it 10 or 11?
Yeah.
Both of those seem to be pretty wide. I'll call them wide fat lots for lack, lack of a better description.
Okay.
Is there, would it make sense to look at, at this clustering and see if there's a way to, perhaps like across the road, there's a flag lot out here that's pretty large and it's, it's close. Can you do any flag lighting with some of this stuff off of Strong? I, I don't know whether there's some contract with particular-
Yeah, I, I would talk it over with the client, but I think, you know, maybe moving one lot over to Strong Road.
I mean, if you made this four building into a three building density by shuffling things around and coming, you know, doing a flag back here, for instance, just talking out loud, I'm not-
Okay.
Trying to design it for you, but if there's a way to spread them out a little bit more, that may alleviate some of the concerns, especially this one lot, it's just so close to the corner and the wetlands. If you could make one lot out of two and then spread these out more and still stick with your ten buildings or whatever it is.
Take a look at those.
I'm sorry?
I'll take a look at those suggestions with the client.
I, I would appreciate it. I mean, I-
Yeah.
I don't know how the residents feel about that, but-
Sure.
I think that might go some, a little more distance than you already have been able to.
Okay.
So, um, I think that's, uh, unless the board has any other questions for discussion, I think that'll do it for the evening. You guys all set? So thank you, residents, for coming, all your comments. We certainly hear them. Want to make sure that, um, you all are heard as well. So, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Joe Muess, Scott Sackens, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, folks.